Good evening. Before we begin our meeting, the city clerk has some announcements to make.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Pursuant to Section 3 of the executive order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020, the regular meeting of the city council for May 26, 2020 will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the council chamber will not be open for the meeting. Some members of council will be participating remotely and will not be physically present in the council chamber. If you would like to speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing the following telephone number, and you will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. * 671 669 900 9128. Meeting ID number is 135 501 140. Password 023 849. The city wants you to know that you can also submit your comments by email to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you in advance for taking all precautions to prevent spreading the COVID-19 virus.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, we will call to order the regular meeting for the City of Grand Terrace, May 26. And tonight, we will be closing in memory of Grand Terrace resident and longtime Women's Club member, Lurleen or Rennie Richmond. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Again? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item of business is a closed session, so we will be recessing to closed session. We have two items. The first is a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Section 54957.6, title City Manager. The second is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager, Adrian Guerra, City Attorney, Colin Tanner, Deputy City Attorney, Employee Organization Teamsters Local 1932, Unrepresented Employees, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Clerk, Director of Public Works, Director of Planning and Development Services, Management Analyst, two positions, and the Assistant Planner. At this time, we are in recess. We will reconvene to open session. The council met and closed session to discuss two items. First one is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Section 54957.6, title City Manager. Number two, we gave direction to staff to bring back this item for closed session at our special meeting on Thursday, May 28. And item number two, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager, Adrian Guerra, City Attorney, Colin Tanner, Deputy City Attorney, Employee Organization Teamsters Local 1932, and Unrepresented Employees, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Clerk, Director of Public Works, Director of Planning and Development Services, Management Analyst, two positions, and Assistant Planner. There are no actions to report on this item. So we will move to the rest of our agenda. We have no special presentations tonight. We can move to reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda. Are there any tonight?
Yes, Mayor. We'd like to take item I six and move it to item I five, just switch the two.
So item six will be our first of new business tonight. And with that, we will move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by city council at one time without discussion. However, any city council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to move an item from the consent calendar? All right, see, no requests. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I'll make motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey.
Yes.
Councilmember Robles.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
Do we have, we'll open public comment at this time, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Restrictions contained in California law prevent city council from discussing or acting on any item not on the agenda. May ask questions for clarification or may request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment. I know we have received some email. Do we have anybody wishing to speak at this time?
The person on hold is actually for HR green contract, so he's just waiting for that.
Would you like to address the email that we received?
So we did receive three emails, and the first one we received was from Jeremy Rivera. His concern is over the last week, we have a major issue with loud illegal fireworks. It drives our dogs absolutely crazy and also is an extremely dangerous situation. That causes, if it causes a vegetation or structural fire, please help. That was the only portion of the email that he did ask me to read for the record. The next email that we received was from Janice Makshinov, and she received her notice to attend the planning commission last week, Thursday, and nowhere on the notice to attend that public hearing did it say that the public could not attend. I was alerted we could not attend the day of the meeting. I wrote an email in haste. My neighbor does not do email. The item up for discussion is adjacent to her property. How many other voices were silenced on important items such as this that will have a big impact on our neighborhood the public should be allowed to attend? And I don't mean virtually, I mean physically. Number two, at the same meeting, an anonymous complaint was filed that day against two planning commissioners. I request an investigation into this complaint and a new procedure in place so we don't lose commissioners or council members on the day of an important vote with no way to investigate. When I was telling someone about this, they made the comment they would keep this in mind when an important vote came up at council. Something must be done to protect the integrity of our city officials. This particular meeting was postponed until next month, and at that time, I hope that this investigation will be resolved and the members of the planning commission can come back. Thank you. And the last email I received is from Lisa Wadley. How many dogs need to be hurt because they've bolted out of yards due to illegal fireworks? How many of our veterans need to suffer because of the insane number of illegal fireworks being shot off in our neighborhoods? What will it take to get some enforcement? Fireworks have been a constant problem and have gotten worse, and this year is shaping to be even more so. The City of Riverside and other neighboring cities are canceling the larger fireworks shows. That means that the Fourth of July will be even more of a mess of booms if the city council does not take some action now. Enforcement is needed to crack down on the violators. All fireworks are illegal except for the Fourth of July, when the safe and sane fireworks may be discharged between the hours of 12 noon to 11 p.m. Our city ordinance does not say that fireworks, safe and sane or otherwise, are legal in the months of January, February, May, or June, or the whole month of July. In years past, both safe and sane fireworks and illegal ones are shot off from the time the stands open on June 28 until well after the Fourth of July. Therefore, laws are being broken. Why isn't the sheriff being instructed to find and find the perpetrators? It's the same houses year after year. Neighbors know who they are and point them out to law enforcement, and nothing is done. I implore the council to consider the number of animals, veterans, and others with PTSD that suffer so that a few residents can disregard the law in the name of fun. Make a plan of action, get the sheriff to actually make an effort to catch the people exploding illegal fireworks and thereby breaking the law. We are not asking to cancel Fourth of July. We are simply asking that instead of those people and animals affected by the obnoxious and unnecessary loud booms, or have PTSD triggers from fireworks that they be able to have the peace to not worry until the one day that they know to prep for. Thank you.
All right, so that's the last email. Is there anybody on the phone at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications. I'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm supposed to use the microphone still, right? Okay. Since our last council meeting, I took the opportunity to attend the planning commission meeting last Thursday on May 21 via Zoom, the Grand Terrace Planning Commission meeting. I do occasionally attend our various board and commission meetings because I believe that we, as the elected leaders and governing body of this city, are responsible to our residents for the actions of our boards and commissions. You know, we've spent a long time and lots of money to produce our general plan and various specific plans and to grow our community into a strong and viable city that is going to survive this downturn in the economy we're faced because of the coronavirus. But, you know, we've got a great community here, and we've worked very hard with our vision to produce, and so I believe it's prudent to occasionally observe and ensure that all our boards and commissions are all, you know, that we're all singing the same song on the same sheet of music. I would just, I received, I would just like to encourage my fellow council members to do the same. You know, these boards and commissions, they report to us, they're there as a service for us to help us, but I would encourage you to occasionally visit these meetings and to make sure that their performance meets your expectations, especially those of you who used to serve on these various boards or commissions, and ask yourselves, are you proud of the way they've turned out? I'd like to invite you to take your heads out of the sand, and I received an email from a prominent resident in our community after our most recent planning commission meeting, which prompted me to make this statement. And this prominent resident did not send a letter to Deborah. It's not this one. But that prominent resident also mentioned the integrity of our boards and commissions and said this is the worst they've ever witnessed in 30 years, so I'd just like you to take that under consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, it seemed kind of strange not having a memorial service in our city, but I want to wish all the families comfort and prayer for the family members who died on the battlefield and some that, like I said in my thing on Facebook, they died decades later from, example, Agent Orange, like my father did, and some who have mental issues that are taking their lives. So I just wish comfort and prayers to the veterans and the family members on that solemn occasion, and God bless the United States. Another thing, I had an executive board meeting the other day on Zoom, and the topic was, you know, cities and their budgets. You know, we're a small city, and a million dollars means a lot to us, and these larger cities, you know, like Ontario Rancho, it's $23 million. So we're not the only city that are laying off people and having budget restraints, and the league is asking the governor for help for all the cities, and hopefully we all combine and get through this and move forward. But we're not the only ones out there being affected by this. It's a lot of cities in the Inland Empire. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Yes, I attended two webinars. One was by the Inland Empire Economic Partnership on May 21 for municipal government leaders. It was very interesting listening to the various leaders talk about the numbers of unemployment expected. All were in the high twenties, and I believe I heard right that Ontario Airport was, had shut down 95% of its capacity. And it was a very robust and good discussion about focusing on the rebound and working our way out of this through economic development and that we should, Greg Deveraux made sure that we should always keep our economic development focus going to withstand this issue. May 22, the Council for Foreign Relations had Lori Garrett, who was a science journalist and former senior fellow on global health, and she gave a very focused discussion on COVID and the testing and its transmission and laid a lot of fears away for government officials on how we go forward on this. And I think with the governor's actions today, we're seeing our way out of this. And just a personal observation, it seems that if we don't have another outbreak that is as disabling as this one was, we might hit Chris Thornburg from Beacon's Economics U-Curve where we quickly rebound from this. Of course, the effects will be for a few years, but we continue to have discussions. Next week, the League of Cities is having a Zoom meeting on revenue and taxation, and I'll bring news from that at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I think it's interesting that we have parties that think it's worth their lives to stretch the envelope in relation to possible illness, justify spreading this COVID further than what it is. But I think it's even more interesting to think that back in the late 1700s and early 1800s, we already knew the solution to the situation, and we ignored it. As we, as we went out of an agricultural society and became industrialized, we pinpointed where our money was being created. And ever since we've created that kind of circumstance, we are not spread out enough, well enough to be able to handle this kind of circumstance. I will take umbrage with my fellow city councilman's comments, and I'd like to ask the city attorney to weigh in on this because my idea was also to monitor, you know, the different committees and so on. I don't think we're as bleak as everybody likes to make it out to be, but that's usually as a result of people that are uninformed and probably not so intelligent, and they make, you know, waving accusations of how things work. So, city attorney, is it our policy or is it a normal policy for city council members to regularly attend all the various auxiliaries? And isn't there some kind of a potential for conflict of interest?
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you.
Generally, most councils do not attend planning commission meetings, public works commission meetings, things of that sort. They monitor them. Usually, the minutes for each of the meetings are presented to the council, and if a council member has a certain project or item of interest, they'll look at that meeting. But no, they do not attend regularly in terms of, what was the other question, Mayor Protem?
Well, I guess it's contained within the question, what does our presence as council members create when we are at one of the auxiliary meetings?
I mean, that's hard to say. I've heard from prior commissioners in other cities that they feel like that project has more importance, that the council is actually there, there's a little more pressure on them to, I guess, do a good job, make sure everything is done properly. So it does change a little bit of the dynamic in terms of the optics that council members are there. But again, there's no prohibition on council members attending meetings. The key is not for council members to not participate in those meetings because it potentially could be appealed to the city council, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Lastly, I would like to bring up the fact that when we start talking about the state backfilling monies and revenues and funds that have been lost through the localities, that's a pipe dream. The state's already stated how far in the hole they are, at least the state of California, and if we're to reach back into the federal, the federal's in the same kind of a problem. You know, it's okay for them to print money forever. We can't do that. The bottom line is, all you're looking at then is a future for inflation. So I would agree that our best path is to work our way out of the circumstance like we always do, but we're going to have to be careful and not get sick in the process. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, so I have a few things. What I'm going to give an update on SBCTA, our General Policy Committee has been dealing with a lot of end-of-year issues as well as COVID-19 related. We did award a contract for financial advisor service. We did a procurement policy update, adoption of confidentiality policy, biennial review, and Amendment of Conflict Interest Code, updating titles, things like that. Freeway Service Patrol Beats Contract Amendments, and those were put off because of COVID-19. And then we also looked at requests for proposals for San Bernardino County Transportation Authority State Advocacy Services. All of these will be recommended to the board for them to approve or decide otherwise. Our Metro Valley Study Session, we had a Measure I Valley Major Street Projects Program. This is interesting because the discussion is that with COVID-19, sales tax revenues will be lower, and that means that our Measure I funding will be lower. That's what we count on for some help with our roads here in the city. And so the Metro Valley Study Session has recommended to the board that the arterial subprogram allocation is adjusted. They were looking at fund balance that they have that was not spent in years past, and they are recommending to the board that for fiscal year 2021, that arterial subprogram allocations be backfilled with this money that they have from years past that has not been spent. So there's an opportunity for arterial subprogram revenue collected through fiscal year 2018-19 to backfill what would otherwise be a shortfall in fiscal year 2021, which is a little bit of good news. What comes after that, we don't know, but that's good news for fiscal year 2021. We also approved a 15-year allocation adjustment strategy to immediately allocate remaining unallocated Valley Major Street Project Program Subarterial Program Review and move that forward to the board. The county board of supervisors has a weekly meeting at least, sometimes a couple of times a week. And so on the heels of the governor's announcements today, we had a little bit more information from our Board of Supervisors Chair Kurt Hagman. And so, of course, as you know, over the weekend, restaurants were given the go-ahead to open beyond just the delivery and to-go orders at the curb, but they are having social distancing guidelines that they must follow. And so the restaurants in town will determine what makes sense for them to open under these distancing guidelines. And as of today, barber shops and hair salons are allowed to open if they are following guidelines for safe opening. There are guidelines available on the state and county website, so that's pretty exciting. What they have not looked at is what will be set for Phase 3, and that is nail salons, tattoo shops, and there are some other in Phase 3 that have not been addressed yet. The supervisor chair is hoping that perhaps that will be moving a little bit more quickly than what we had thought. The county is working on ways to safely provide cooling centers because as we heat up and we still have these distancing guidelines, they have to find a way to accommodate those that really need to be in cooling centers, especially our seniors. And then the county is scheduled to open to the public on June 1. And then lastly, I wanted to talk a little bit about Memorial Day, too, because it is odd that we weren't able to have a ceremony to remember those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. The Veterans Wall of Freedom Committee did allow for the families who have plaques that went up between Veterans Day and Memorial Day to come at scheduled times to view those plaques with their families. They gave them different, they had a time between 10 and noon, and so they made sure that the different families came, and there weren't large gatherings of people. Taps was played at 11:30 by one of the members of the committee's husband, Harry Holmes. He's very good at the bugle, plays taps just about every ceremony for us, and so he was there. We were treated to being in the path of the flyovers of the vintage military planes at noon. And so I thank you to the Veterans Wall of Freedom Committee for at least making sure that plaques still went up and those families were able to see it. But that park is open now as a passive park, so people can go and they can pay their respects, and they can remember those that fought for our freedoms. So we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. We do not have any public hearings today. We have no unfinished business. So we'll move into new business. The first item we'll take in new business will be the settlement agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Teamsters Local 1932. That is item six on our agenda, but we're taking that first. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor.
Ah ha, it's Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. The staff report before you is the settlement agreement between the city and Teamsters Local 1932. Next slide, please. Our 2030 vision, this staff report supports the city's core values of being an open and inclusive government and by providing a positive and productive work environment for employees. Next slide, please. So I will be going through a quick background, what had occurred until where we are today. Next slide. So on December 5 of last year, Teamsters Local 1932 filed a representation petition with the California Public Employment Relations Board. Their primary purpose was to represent the city's non-exempt employees on matters pertaining to wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. Next slide, please. On January 3, PERB issued a letter to both the city and Teamsters stating that they will conduct representation proceedings. About a month later, we got another letter from PERB stating that they've reviewed all of the Teamsters documentation. Teamsters has provided sufficient documentation and evidence of majority support. Next slide, please. So based on that, they further noted that unless the city doubted the appropriateness of the proposed unit, recognition must be granted. So now I will go into our discussion portion. Next slide, please. One more time. Thank you. So on February 27, the city responded with the following statement. The city was willing to agree to the appropriateness of the unit as long as it is limited to permanent and full-time employees. It should not include part-time, temporary, at-will exempt managerial supervisory or probationary employees. And we also noted that should any of the above be included, the city will dispute the petition for recognition. Next slide, please. So on March 16, PERB informed both parties of a notice of informal conference to discuss the informal settlement of the dispute, but they urged both parties to reach a resolution if possible prior to the proposed telephonic conference. That did not happen, so a telephonic conference did occur. Next slide, please. So on May 4, the city and Teamsters' legal representatives participated in a telephonic informal conference hearing conducted by PERB. So a settlement agreement was reached with the attorneys executing the same, and both parties tentatively agreed to the miscellaneous unit. So the next few slides will kind of highlight what was in the settlement agreement. Next slide, please. One more. Thank you. highlight what was in the settlement agreement. Next slide, please. One more. Thank you. So according to the agreement, the unit shall include all permanent and full-time employees. It shall exclude management, confidential, supervisory, part-time, temporary, at-will, retired annuitants, and the classifications of assistant planner, principal accountant, and management analyst. Next slide, please. So the permanent and full-time employees that we currently have at this time, that will be part of the proposed miscellaneous unit are the maintenance lead, the maintenance worker two, the bus driver, the office specialist, and the permit technician. Next slide, please. So the other terms, terms included that the Teamsters has demonstrated majority employee support for the unit. Upon city council approval, city, the city will acknowledge Teamsters as the recognized employee organization of the miscellaneous unit of employees. Next slide, please. That this agreement is subject to city council approval. If the agreement is approved, the case, the PERB case will be withdrawn by Teamsters, and the city will request PERB to close the case. Next slide, please. If the agreement is not approved, the settlement agreement before council will become null and void. We will request PERB to investigate the petition. We will request PERB to conduct an election, and also ask them to take any other action with respect to the petition filed. And next slide, please. Part of the agreement also stated that the city should notify PERB within 24 hours of city council's decision, and that this agreement represents a full and complete resolution of the claims and disputes between the city and Teamsters Local 1932. At this time, this concludes my report. Deputy City Attorney Colin Tanner is also on the Zoom meeting, and I will be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there questions of staff at this time? All right, I have a question. But I don't know that anybody here can answer it. My, my uncle was a trade union member, and he's very proud of his service in his job, but also as a member of his union. He would tell me about the standards that the union set for doing a good job and showing up ready for work and continuing your education and presenting yourself well. And in this staff report, all I'm seeing is that Teamsters will be representing based on pay and benefits. So I'm wondering if this, this union membership will encourage these and instill these values that my uncle so, so much cherished about his union membership. And I think it's in the best interest of our residents to know if, if that's also what's coming with this union membership.
Yes, Mayor, for the record, G. Harold Duffy. So one of the things that's very important in how we move forward in this process is that the, our employees will be their members. So we have a partnership that we have to, we have to work on. And so my past history with the unions is one where it's not adversarial, but it's a partnership, because their members are our employees, and they're providing a service to the citizens. So your point is well taken. And so as soon as, if the council approves this document, we will start developing that relationship, and we will make sure that if they are going to be a part of the community, that we do rise to the level, they have additional training and, and programs for our employees, that we want to make sure they take advantage of it.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Allen.
So Mayor, I'll make a, a motion to recommend approving the settlement agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Teamsters Local 1932.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we'll go to item five on our agenda, which is consideration of amendment number one to agreement with HR Green California for inspection and plan check services to extend term of agreement to June 13, 2022. I have down here Public Works who will be giving our staff report tonight. Mr. Duffy?
Mr. French will be giving the staff report.
All right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Mayor Protem, Alan French with Public Works, here to present this item of the amendment to the on-call contract for construction, inspection, and plan check services with HR Green. This item supports 2030 goal number two. The city previously approved a three-year contract with HR Green. Next slide, please. This contract included inspection and plan check services with two one-year extensions optional with the maximum compensation of $40,000 per year. This amendment extends the term for the two years with the same yearly maximum. Under the original contract, HR Green has assisted the city with the Rollins Playground Project. Next slide, please. As well as the year-two CIP for approximately $38,000 in compensation. Next slide, please. With this amendment, the end of the contract term will now be in June 2020, should the council approve it. Staff is recommending approval of the amendment and keeping the $40,000 per year maximum. I am happy to answer any questions, and Gary Yeo from HR Green is on the line as well, should council have any other questions. Thank you.
Questions of staff? Mr. French, just to clarify, we're asking for a contract extension, but no more money, correct?
With the, with the time extension, each year we allot the $40,000 for that year of work.
So it would be an additional $40,000 each year we're extending it?
Yes, ma'am. It is. But that's, this is an on-call contract, so we, we don't, they don't, they aren't guaranteed $40,000. It's as we need them, we call them, and that's, they bill us for that time.
So for each, for each year, they could spend up to $40,000 if we called them for services? But it doesn't accumulate? They don't get $40,000 and then the remainder of what they had the prior year?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
And Mayor, a good example of that would be over this last three years, it was $40,000 maximum, but they only spent $38,000 for the entire three-year period. We used them to that level.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Wilson, you had question? If you would unmute.
I don't hear anything in relation to the time. Bottom line is, it's not, not to exceed on-call, and it's determined by staff how much inspection time we need in order to be able to do, you know, reasonable review and, and inspection, or monitoring, actually. What, what controls the hourly rates?
Mayor Protem, the hourly rate is, was provided in their proposal.
And Mayor Protem, if I can jump in here just for a second, and this, this kind of is consistent with what we told the council during our, our, our budget discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago. We are in the process of sending a letter to all of our contractors, letting them know that because of COVID-19, we would be expecting to renegotiate some of, some of the rates. And so that, to Mayor Protem's question, we will be contacting HR Green about that, about that potential reduction in the rate because of COVID-19.
Okay. I can see how, I can see how that could work backwards, but I don't see a lot of incentive if we, if we extend the contract the way we're being, the way it's being proposed. So I think it's something we need to settle before, or else we have no recourse, whether we want to do a rebid or what we want to do. So I think we're, our triggers, we're a little ahead of the trigger here.
Yes. And, and so what we have here is HR Green is one of three contractors that we, that we can call upon. And so as we send the letters out to all three of the contractors and have this discussion with them, I understand that, what, what you're saying, but one of the things that we're trying to do is, is to prepare ourselves for the HIS project on Mount Vernon. That project is, was approved in 2000, November of 2016, and we are just, we, we've got the go-ahead from the state, and we're trying to move forward with, with the contract oversight. So that's why we were trying to get this contract approved. But absolutely, we are, we will be having that discussion with HR Green along with the other two contractors. And if HR Green isn't, doesn't quite understand what we're, what we're addressing, we will move on to, to the next contractor. And so.
Ask their scope of work is, Mr. City Manager, is it limited to inspection, or does it include plan check? Because my understanding is we are going to try to do some plan check in, in-house.
This would not include plan checking for, since we, we have, Interwest is doing in-house inspection, and we, we retain those plan checking fees. This is really for the, the Mount Vernon HIS project, where they'll be doing the contract oversight.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed on this dollar amount, Mr. Duffy, I just wanted to, to ask, you know, for, not just myself probably, but for anybody else who's listening out there who queues in and watches these meetings live on the city's website like I do, this would be a question I would ask. You know, why are we asking for three times as much? Are we anticipating an increase in the need for, of their services over the next? I mean, we're, we're asking, you're asking for us to give you three times as much, you know, instead of $40,000 over three years, $120,000 for three years. And I understand that it'll only get used as needed, but is, is, are you anticipating that, that there's going to be the three times as much need for their services?
Well, no, but here's what could possibly happen, because we have three consultants looking, working with us on, on, on call basis. What this does, this allows us to be able to handle multiple projects and have the resources to do that. Unlike if we had, if we had this internal staff, we'd be paying the, you know, we'd be paying on a regular basis. But this is only for what we use, and so by having a $40,000 number, that puts us in the realm of being able to, to manage a very large project. And, and, but if we don't use that, there's no, there's no expense there for, for us.
And we wouldn't, we wouldn't turn to the, to another, one of, one of the other contractors and, and this, this is for, just for HR Green, right?
This is just for HR Green.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Further questions? All right. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Close public comment, bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I move adoption of the.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Robles and a second by Councilmember Allen. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven, commitment of fund balance for fiscal year 2019, 2020 in accordance with Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54 and City Reserve Policy Number 3.06. Ms. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. The staff report before you, again, as the mayor mentioned, is regarding our fund, fund balance designation for the current year, for fiscal year 2019, 20. This staff report supports city council goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations, and providing city council any scheduled updates on the city's fiscal condition. Next slide, please. So GASP 54 is a statement that was issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which required that fund balance be reported in a certain way. And again, for a brief explanation, fund balance refers to the difference between what the city owns, which are assets, and what the city owes, which are liabilities. Next slide, please. So they had required that we designate fund balance, classify, categorize into five major classifications. Non-spendable, and the example I put would be the principal of an endowment fund or developer deposits. So our Dog Park Endowment Fund would be designated under the non-spendable category. And the second one is restricted funds, meaning they are, we receive them or we set aside for a specific purpose. So most of our special revenue funds are considered restricted funds. And so when we prepare our financial reports, most of our fund balance and our special revenue funds fall under this. And of course, our, our bond proceeds, as like you said, I have written gas tax, development impact fees, these are just samples of restricted funds. Next slide, please. And then our next category is committed, and the only, only the highest decision-making authority, which is the city council, can commit fund balance. And we commit examples that we've used this for is for contingencies, community services, public safety, our fixed assets. Next slide, please. And the next one is assigned, which the city manager and/or the finance director can assign the designation. And unassigned, I just want to make sure that city council understands it's a designation. It's not an authority to spend. It is just how to categorize our fund balance before we close our books at the end of this fiscal year. Next slide, please. Just a reminder for city council, when we started creating these little events, we decided to create other funds so that we can actually track the revenues and expenditures. One, our Community Benefits Fund, our light-up Grand Terrace, Public Safety, our Birthday Celebration Fund, our Community Day Fund, and our Equipment Replacement Reserve. Now, when our financial statements are prepared, they're all rolled into one general fund. But I just wanted city council to be aware. Now, these funds, we can take away, return, or take off as council wishes to do so. Again, like I said, since they all roll up into the general fund, it was just used for better tracking. Next, next slide, please.
I have one question before you go on.
Yes, Mayor.
With the fireworks, illegal fireworks enforcement, what do we do with that? What did we do with that in the past?
On, on that day, I, I believe we would hire additional deputies on the Fourth of July to follow that, and it would be supportive if any fines were issued on that day. That's where we put it into that fund to see if it was self-supporting. And the last couple of years, I believe the expense in there was between $400 and $500. And so that paid for whatever time, part-time of the deputies. And we also received, like I said, some, some funding for that.
Okay.
And that is normally, yeah, handled with Planning and Development Services.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions before I continue? So, to continue, as the next slide shows, this is our total estimated fund balance. The General Fund, number 10, having the most of $2.7 million, and if you can see the balances of our others. Next slide, please. The required recommended fund balance is two months of either operating revenues or expenditures. The city has always used revenues. Based on our year-end estimated revenues of $5.4, two months of that is $910,000, 16.7%. However, because of our unspent 2011 excess bond proceeds, our general fund's fund balance is actually higher than that. Next slide, please. So how we arrived at our current fund balance, at the beginning of 2018-19, and at that time, we had already received approval to use so much of our excess bond proceeds. We had $3.3 million. By the end of June 30th, we had spent a little bit. 2019-20, we started with $3.3. As we had mentioned, when we provided a year-end projection, we would be only receiving $5.4, and yet expending $5.9. We received approval from City Council to spend $357,000 and change, giving us a fund balance of $2.7 million. Next slide, please. So what we are requesting at this time is that City Council approve the fund balance designation. Designation is what I refer to, or it's like a placeholder. Prior to this, we would do the fund balance designation at the beginning of the year and come towards the end, and now it's May or June. Because of COVID-19, our fund balance has really changed dramatically, so we wanted to reassign those designations. So the restricted, under infrastructure of 1.9, that is actually our unspent 2011 bond proceeds, and it can be used for what is stated in the bond indenture. So I wanted to make sure, it's not limited to just infrastructure, that is the category that we were designated. We want to commit 646. Normally, I would have a $900,000 number there. However, again, we requested to use at least 357, so that's the balance. We have a little bit for community services, and we are designating $50,000 for continuing appropriations. These are what we feel have to be paid in the following year, but has been expended this year. And again, this is just for future... Yes.
Mayor Protem had a question.
I'm assuming that's what we call float right now. I mean, it's the difference in when the bills come in.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
And then our last one is just for our future debt obligation. Totalling again, our fund balance, our projected fund balance by the end of June at $2.7 million. Next slide, please. So at this time, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution 2020-X, committing the general fund's fund balance in accordance with GASP 54 for fiscal year 2019-20. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Questions of staff at this time? All right, seen none. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor?
I move.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Robles and a second by Councilmember Allen.
You can do all the motions, Jeff.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please call the vote. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number eight, First Amendment to the promissory note issued on June 30th, 2022, or excuse me, 2020, in the amount of $875,000 between the City of Grand Terrace General Fund and the City of Grand Terrace Wastewater Fund to extend the commercial date for payments and maturity date by two years. Assistant City Manager Fortune?
And good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. The staff report before you is the First Amendment to the promissory note between the General Fund and the Wastewater Fund. Next slide, please. The staff report supports Goal Number One, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. Next slide, please. So just to provide City Council with the background, on September 2016, the city purchased property on 22373 Barton Road for approximately $924,000 and change. City Council authorized the use of $900,000 from the city's cash in hand for securitization. $20,000 from the General Fund was used to lower the internal loan to $875,000. Now, on July 2018, City Council formalized the promissory note between the Wastewater Fund and the General Fund. Next slide, please. I just wanted to go back to just reiterate that the Wastewater Fund is classified as an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund is a self-supporting government fund that provides goods and services to the public for a fee. It's actually referred to as a user charge, because it's for the use of... An enterprise fund uses the same accounting framework followed by entities in the private sector. So when we actually prepare our financial report, the Wastewater Fund is listed separately and distinctly, because they do not cover the same accounting practices that we do with the rest of our other funds. Next slide, please. So enterprise funds are used to account for operations operated in a manner similar to private business enterprises, where the intent of the governing body is that the costs, including depreciation or capital improvements, of providing goods or services to the general public on a continuing basis be recovered primarily through user charges. Next slide, please. So what I wanted to show council, and I know it's also written in the agreement, that initially, our first payment would have this coming July, and it would have been the annual amount plus interest, and the interest consisted of the life rate plus 1%, and the term of the loan was for 10 years. Next slide, please. So the COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in the city declaring both a local and fiscal emergency. Governor Newsom's stay-at-home orders and allowing only essential businesses to stay open has set a significant effect on the city's revenues, reducing it the wrong way. Financial analysis of the economic impacts associated with COVID-19 are currently difficult to predict, making revenues volatile and uncertain at this point. Next slide, please. So staff believes it is prudent to have cash on hand at this time and to mitigate any further impacts to the city's general fund reserves. As part of the Revenue Enhancement and Expenditure Reduction Plan, staff recommended, and City Council approved, that the loan between the General Fund and Wastewater Fund be extended. So staff is requesting City Council to approve Amendment Number One to the promissory note. Next slide, please. So the terms of the amendment are actually the same, but we are requesting that two-year extension. So it's the annual amount plus interest pursuant to the agreement, the local agency investment fund, the life rate plus 1%, and a 10-year. But what I wanted to make sure that City Council is aware of what was actually agreed to in the original promissory note. The promissory note actually stated that interest shall accrue per annum commencing on September 13, 2016. So I did a table so that City Council can see how much interest is accruing annually. Next slide, please. So based on life plus 1%, this is how much interest we've been accruing each year. So at the end of June, we would have owed $875,000 plus $92,000 to the Wastewater Fund. And what I did again was just project the life rate to give us an idea of how much the next two years would be. So total interest come June 30th, 2022, because we're going to start our annual payments the following day, July 1st, would be $148,000. Next slide, please. So our annual payments would be, starting on July 1, 2022, would be $102,000. The principal of 87, plus the interest of 14.8. And of course, that interest will slowly go down as we pay off that principal. Next slide, please. Again, it is staff's recommendation that City Council approve the First Amendment to the promissory note between the General Fund and Wastewater Fund. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Questions of staff at this time?
I have a question. With the sale of the land, when that is finally completed, we could pay off the whole note at the time, correct?
That is correct. There is no penalty for early payment.
Okay. All right, any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
I recommend approval, make a motion to recommend approval of staff's recommendation. Do I need to read it? The promissory note issued on June 30, 2020, in the amount of $875,000 between the City of Grand Terrace General Fund and the City of Grand Terrace Wastewater Fund to extend the commencement date for payments maturity date by two years.
I'm waiting to give others a chance.
Waiting on?
Was that Councilmember Robles?
I was waiting to give others a chance to make a motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Allen. Is there a second? Doug Wilson, Mayor Protem Wilson seconds that motion. Or did you have a question?
No.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Mayor Protem. Please call the vote. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
No, I mean, yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number nine on our agenda is the 27th Amendment to Law Enforcement Services Contract 94-797 with the County of San Bernardino to provide law enforcement services for fiscal year 2021 to the City of Grand Terrace. Assistant City Manager Fortune?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Before you is the 27th Amendment with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. This is our law enforcement contract for fiscal year 2020-21. Next slide, please. So this staff report supports the following goals. Goal Number One, ensuring our fiscal viability through the review and monitoring of contractual agreements and expenditures. And Goal Number Two, maintaining public safety by ensuring adequate staff levels for police services for our community. Next slide, please. Look at Grand Terrace, well, this amendment has contracted with the San Bernardino Sheriff's Department since 1994, and for City Council's review is the 27th Amendment for $2.2 million. Next slide, please. Part of the law enforcement services that are written in the contract is the enforcement of state statutes, enforcement of city ordinances, traffic enforcement, specialized enforcement, which includes arson, homicide, juvenile, and narcotics, and attendance at City Council meetings. Next slide, please. This is the staffing levels that are actually included in the amendment as attached to the staff report. The amendment is showing an increase of $136,000 and change from the current year's cost of $2 million. As City Council is aware that the City Manager has requested the sheriff, we can request the delay in the increase, and maybe the City Manager can add further, but I believe the Sheriff's Department is taking that to the Board of Supervisors for consideration. However, at this time, next slide, please. Staff is recommending that the City Council approve the 27th Amendment with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department and authorize the City Manager to execute the contract. That concludes our report. However, the lieutenant is here, and I and the City Manager are happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. I believe Mayor Protem has a couple of questions.
I have a couple of small questions. Might I understand that John is there from the Sheriff's Department?
We have Lieutenant Lane is here.
Mayor Protem, this is Lieutenant Lane. I'm here.
Very good. I'd like to point you at a particular section of this contract. It's true that it was done in 1994, but it specifically states, and I'll quote, "City shall not have the right to determine or direct the manner or means of performance." In other words, the standard of practice that the sheriff has is his ultimate discretion, period. So I have a little bit of problem with that, and let me say why. The contract is a subcontract type of contract, and in that case, we're going through the Board of Supervisors who have agreed to be able to farm out the sheriff's activities, but in that, that does not ever mean, even though someone from our city signed this at point, that Section 6 should be included in this. And so I'm going to ask my city attorney if there has been an addendum written in relation to this particular portion of the contract to address this lack of accountability to the general contractor, which is the city.
I am not aware... Thank you, Mayor. I'm not aware of any amendments to this section. I believe each of the amendments have been the annual increase in compensation, but I'm happy to take a look and see if there's anything in the previous files or actions on this item.
My thought is that we need to either table this item or hold it over for another timeframe, because I've had a problem with this for a long time, and it takes a reading of the contract, considering the fact that we have a $5.8 million budget, and we have $207,992 that is going towards police protection, but we have absolutely no say in that police protection. There's something wrong with this. It's been wrong for a long time. And you've heard me talk about the lack of, almost a total lack of traffic enforcement, but according to their own contract that they wrote, everything is covered unilaterally, and we have no say on how things are controlled. And yet, if I was to ask tomorrow, can you give me a report on ticketing or traffic, pulling people out over for traffic issues? The amount of traffic ticketing is ridiculously low. So I think we've got a problem, and I think we need to solve it right at the beginning of the contract. You know, there should be regular reporting that should be included to the City Council, and if it's going to the City Manager now, fine, just copy us, but we should know exactly what we're, you know, that we're in, that the laws are being enforced in an equal proportion to what's happening out there, and they're not being. They're not. And we have no say in it. And we have no say in it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding what Mayor Pro Tem Wilson's discussion is about right now, I think I will make my statement, and I'll ask the city attorney if it's, but my understanding is, because this states, in the second sentence of such, of said Section Six, "The responsibility of sheriff and of county to city hereunder shall be to provide as an independent contracting agency." And my understanding is that an independent contractor, the employer or the contracting agency with that contractor, by law cannot, if they're hiring them as a contractor, cannot tell them what to do. It's against the law. Is that correct? Something with the tax of, the pay, the tax board, you know, and all that.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, that is a general rule of being an independent contractor is the owner or the agency that's hiring the contractor sets forth the goals for them. This is what I want, but it's up to the independent contractor to figure it out how to get there. And they're obviously hired because they're professionals in that area, they have that experience, and you're relying on them to actually do what they need to do to achieve the objectives of what the agency has hired them to do. I will note that there is also a benefit in being an independent contracting agency in that it protects us from liability to some extent. So for example, if there is a, and I'll use the term that you hear, like excessive force that you hear on the news a lot, in those cases, because they're an independent contractor, that helps that we have that language in there so that we're not necessarily brought into a lawsuit. That doesn't mean we can't be, but it's helpful to have that language in there.
Okay. And with all that said, I do agree with Mayor Pro Tem that, you know, there's, I've heard his complaints in the past about the traffic issues in town, and so I respect that, and I agree with him on that, and I don't mind having that discussion with him. But I think this deal with the independent contracting and all that, we need to, that's how it has to be.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, and you're making my point. My point is that when we hire an independent contractor, they are the experts, and the scope of work that is included in the contract written in nineteen ninety-four spells out no exclusions to what they are supposed to cover. So if they are the experts, and they also furnish an isolation issue for us in relation to legal liability, then why aren't we getting what we're paying for?
All right. Lieutenant Lane, would you like to address any of these questions?
Well, I will certainly do my best, Madam Mayor and City Council. It is the goal and the mission of the Sheriff's Department to provide the highest level of service to the public and the communities that we serve, and I believe that the members of this department do that on a daily basis. The other major portion of proactive enforcement is, of course, taking into consideration the priorities and issues that are presented by the city to us for our enforcement efforts. So as we hear what problems are occurring within the community that are of interest to the city and to the safety of the public, we certainly take those considerations and try to build them into our daily patrol functions. There are certainly things that come to us on a daily basis that often interrupt or take us away from some of those proactive measures, because calls for service will always be a priority over, say, traffic enforcement or other things that may happen regularly. But the main priority of us is to respond to those emergency calls for service and other calls that the public makes to us for service. So all of our people are directed to, in between those calls for service, to be out in the city, providing that high level of enforcement just by their mere presence, driving through the city, to enact traffic enforcement stops as they see those violations occur and take appropriate actions. Those actions may result in a citation, and many times those actions may result in a verbal warning. That is all dependent upon the discretion of the deputy and the circumstances of that particular stop, but they are very, very keenly aware of our interest and desire to make sure that the priorities and the goals of this city are being attended to as they fall within our purview.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Just one final concern. I agree with you. It's important, especially considering the contracts are written the way it is, that you are able to address the issues that are the most pertinent, in other words, the hottest issues. It's an overall quality of life, and unfortunately, because we're not in an island, well, we're in an island of sorts, but geographically speaking, we have a ton of circulation through this town at this point that we didn't have probably ten years ago. And when this agreement was written in nineteen ninety-four, it was a lot bleaker. You could probably eat a sandwich in Barton Road. It's different now, and so we have an increased problem in relation to it. I see no limitation to this contract, and it's not for me to tell you how to go about it. I know this council could probably fire you, but you can't tell you what to do. I got no problem with that, just as long as we get what we need.
Mr. City Manager? It used to be quite regularly that you would send to us a sheriff's report, and I don't recall having seen one of those reports in a number of weeks. Have you sent them and they have not been received?
I have not sent them, Mayor. I do receive the reports on a weekly basis from Lieutenant Lane. I have not sent those reports. I've been in the midst of sending other reports to the council, and so, but we do send the monthly report to the council. So I expect to start sending that report to you on a regular basis again. We were doing some modification and providing you some charts along with the report, but I can certainly start sending the raw data over to you immediately.
Okay. I was just wondering if that's why Mayor Pro Tem was saying that we weren't getting any information for what's going on with the sheriff. Mayor Pro Tem, were you finding those reports helpful at all when you did receive them?
To some extent, but the report that I found the most helpful, and I think I showed it to you, Mayor, was is that the ticketing was so low. And I know that we get, as a council, we get plenty of conversation taking place in relation to not only the fireworks circumstance, but also people, you know, pulling donuts in the middle of our intersections. Like I said before, you know, the circulation situation here is a lot different than it used to be, and it's going to grow because of what we've done down on Barton Road Interchange. I just think we have to, I think the sheriff is going to have to look at things a little bit differently in Grand Terrace and help us out with this enforcement.
I have no video and no way to ask to be recognized, so please excuse me.
Okay. Councilmember Robles, questions?
I was just wondering if we might prioritize in our Thursday meeting what we'd like to see law enforcement look like in our community.
Yes, we can certainly do that as part of the process, and actually, that's a very good segue. If you look at packet page one twenty-six, if you look at A, B, C, D, and E, there is kind of broken down the services, and I think it is important that the council weigh in yet again, if you can break it down further, because I think what's happening in this particular case is, while it is two point two million dollars, it is given priority based on, as Lieutenant Lane said, calls, priority calls. And so, for example, every year during the school year opening, we send extra resources out around the schools about traffic issues. But as soon as something happens within the town, those resources are pulled away. So there have been some cases where we've actually been able to work with the Sheriff's Department to route certain resources based on historical data. But absolutely, I think Mayor Pro Tem is correct, there have been some shifts and some changes in traffic, especially, and when the intersection opens up in June, we're going to see a full flow of that. So actually, it's pretty timely that we have the priority workshop on Thursday, and we can send that message to the sheriff.
All right. Councilmember Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem said the traffic issues and, you know, stop signs are pretty much yield signs around here, and I know, you know, the sheriffs can't be anywhere, but this is a question in regards, because I know on packet one twenty-six, you know, it has enforcement of state status enforcement ordinance of the city that we put together, traffic enforcement accepted by the freeway, the highway patrol, detective, juvenile, and other specific services, arson, homicides, which, you know, you guys saw the homicide, attendant meetings, which you guys are here. But as like, well, we had a couple residents to talk about fireworks issue. Lieutenant, can you just explain what the protocol is for firework issues? If a resident does call in that service and they see somebody, I mean, do you have to have hands on, you have to see him, actually do it? Or, you know, because we, you know, I know in the council, the past, you know, we passed the thing ordinance on that to not, you know, a no holds bar, you know, you catch him, that's it, there's no slap on the hand, it's an automatic fine. Can you explain to me what you guys do?
Sure. So in cases where a resident would call in and tell us that a neighbor on the street is lighting off fireworks, either legal or illegal, but maybe against the violation, against the city ordinance, that constitutes a misdemeanor. Misdemeanors by law for us to take action on have to be committed within our presence. So when we receive that call, obviously, and arrive, it's after the fact. What we require at that point, then, is, in effect, citizen's arrest. We need to have that citizen who witnessed that crime tell us that they wish to make that citizen's arrest and point us to the person that's responsible for it, and then we take over from there. We are required to take all citizen's arrests. So the problem historically has been, those calls come in many, many times anonymously, and we don't have a reporting party that we can contact because they don't desire contact. So we get a call saying fireworks occurring at this address or in front of this address will arrive, and of course, at that moment, there happens to be nothing occurring. We will generally always spend a few minutes driving through the neighborhood with the windows down, trying to see if we can hear or ascertain where any of those things may be coming from. So it requires some investigation and some track down. We may hear noise in the area, but trying to pinpoint exactly where it's coming from, you know, beyond yards and streets over, it's difficult, and as you said, I think we can't be everywhere at all times. So we do our very, very best, and I would absolutely tell you that any activity like that that does occur within our presence, we will take swift action on, and that anybody who wishes to be a victim and make that citizen's arrest and point us to the person responsible, we will also take very swift action.
So long as they're up front and make a citizen arrest, you know, as long as we don't have them involved in getting altercation and escalate from there, correct?
I'm sorry?
Well, we don't want, you know, the citizen arrest is just going to be, you know, observation, not hands-on.
No. So let me explain citizen's arrest. We would never put somebody in harm's way by physical confrontation in that sort of circumstance. It would be through discussion separately with the parties. We would have everybody identified and at the scene. We would receive that information from the reporting party who wishes to make that citizen's arrest, and then we would go take that action. We wouldn't ever put anybody face-to-face with having to take that action.
All right. Thanks, Lieutenant. I just wanted to ask you that question since you were already up here, and I know that was a concern. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask, maybe, maybe Mr. City Manager, perhaps you, Lieutenant, what does this contract not cover that we will have to pay for on top of anything that you can think of? Like, if you total out a patrol car here in the city, will we have to pony up for another one, or, you know, SWAT activities, something like that, maybe? I don't know.
Well, it's not so much a matter of what you don't get as what you do get, and you get a lot more than what's included in this contract, and a few of them were mentioned in the presentation. It is homicide, it is crimes against children detail, it is bomb arson, it is SWAT, and it's all of those extra entities that come to those sorts of instances that occur within the city at no charge. As an example, we did have a car that blew its motor. It was one of the Grand Terrace units that blew its motor a couple months ago. We just received a brand-new unit within the last week or two as a replacement, and I don't believe that that resulted in a bill to the city. So the Sheriff's Department takes care of all those things.
Okay. So I wouldn't get an agenda item mid-contract or mid-year saying, "We need to add a few thousand dollars because this happened."
I don't know that that's ever happened, and I doubt that it will.
Well, just some clarification on that. You're absolutely right, you wouldn't get that, but there is a provision in the contract that that's all laid out. Just for example, there's provisions in the contract that talks about liability. We pay into a liability fund as part of our agreement. So, you know, they've got their contract broken out to cover all the aspects of operation, and so while you're not going to get an independent bill for that, you, it is...
We are paying for that.
You are paying for that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But I did want to just make it very clear, Mayor, and one of the things that Lieutenant Lane said was very important, is what you are paying for is that if you have an issue that requires twenty, thirty officers, a helicopter, all those things, detectives for issues in crimes, you are, that comes as part of the, you're part of the package.
Yeah, that's exactly why I did not ask, what do we get? Because I've seen all that, and I've known all that. And it's extensive, and I'm glad we have it. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, you had a question?
No, I just wanted to add that even, we're talking about billkeeping issues. The bottom line is, is if the Sheriff's Department or the County Board of Supes decides at their discretion that they don't need to bill us for something that might not be covered underneath the inclusive agreement, there is a specific section that does not include vehicle repair, fuel costs, and replacement in the event of a crash, and, you know, several of those things. So they're there, and however they choose to allocate the money to cover those conditions, I can guarantee you they're not losing any money. At this juncture, we're talking about, and I believe, to bring it back to the point of order, we're talking about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar cost of living increase. I just thought it was appropriate to get a few things clarified, because it seems, it may not be true, but it seems that after twenty-seven or twenty-eight worth of extensions, it's nice to ask a few questions about the agreement and see if, you know, we're getting what we're paying for, and if maybe we're not communicating what we need to. But we have to be careful, because since it specifically says that they're the experts, when we start declaring how they're going to do their stuff, but yet it includes a hundred percent of everything, then we're putting the fly in the ointment, so we have to be careful. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles, did you have further questions?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. I'll bring it back to council. And what I will say from my part is that I do understand your point, Mayor Pro Tem, but I also know that I think they wrote the contract in a way to set aside money in the future for the cost of the new vehicles when they come due, and to me, that's prudent budgeting, if that's how they work it into their fiscal contracts. I did notice the new car. It looks very nice. I've also noticed the influx of law enforcement. When we absolutely need law enforcement, they are here. So as much as I would really like them to slow down the traffic... So as much as I would really like them to slow down the traffic, I also know that we get what we need when we need it, when it comes to the big cases. And so I look forward to discussion on Thursday about looking at priorities and maybe discussion about better ways to communicate so that you're able to showcase the work that you are doing for us, and hopefully you can join us in that conversation.
I would love to. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. So we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'll recommend the approval of the Twenty-Seventh Amendment, the Law Enforcement Services Contract number ninety-four seven ninety-seven with the County of San Bernardino to provide law enforcement services for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty-one, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Councilmember Hesse. Will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Wilson?
No.
Mayor McNibbo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like a four-minute recess, please. Our next item on the agenda is item ten, introduction of FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one proposed budget. Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protim, City Council. Before you is the City of Grand Terrace proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one. The staff report supports our twenty thirty vision and goals. Next slide, please. Ensuring our fiscal solvency, maintaining public safety, promoting economic development, developing and implementing successful partnerships, and engaging in proactive communications. Next slide, please. So we will be talking about the general fund. The staff report, though, just to provide City Council with an overview, I did, we did repeat the table for the current year. And again, at this time, it's still showing that we are proposing to use around three-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand in general fund, fund balance. But since we met with City Council, certain other things came to light, a few things that we had to reconsider, one being the sheriff's contract. At this time, we were, we had to put it back in the event that it is either denied, approved, whether it's delayed or not, we had to account for that additional expenditure, and also the city's maintenance of effort. The city receives Measure I funds and road maintenance and rehabilitation program funds. Both of those funds require what refer to as a maintenance of effort. At the time when we provided a year-end projection for the current year, it did not include maintenance of effort in the general fund. And because that was what we used as our base for next year, maintenance of efforts funds were not in there either. So that's another expense I had to return. Another thing what we did was also go back and look at our property tax projections that we received from HDL. And according to them, they are saying, in spite of COVID nineteen, our current year property tax and our next year's property tax will remain the same. If there's any effect, it is minimal. What they're looking at is probably seeing that delay in twenty-one, twenty-two. So as a result of that, we returned property taxes, and we also increased our expense by the two big items that I said, our maintenance of effort and our service contract. So based on that, next slide, please, for the general fund. Again, I provided a table in our staff report that would show the incremental increase to our property taxes, but our total revenues proposed now are five-point-eight million. Next slide, please. And as shown in this chart, sixty-two, sixty-three percent of the general fund's revenues are derived from property tax, whether it be residual receipts from the property tax fund or our general tax levy. That is the bulk of our revenues. Sales taxes next, followed by franchise fees and licenses, fees and permits, and so on. Next slide, please. So here now are expenditures projected at five-point-nine million. As I mentioned, our professional services do include two-hundred-thousand in maintenance of effort and one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand for the Sheriff's Department increase. Next slide, please. So as shown, our general fund of five-point-nine, three-point-three is in professional and contractual services. Next slide, please. To give City Council just an overview of what is accounted in our three-point-three, these are the top twelve of our contracts that we have that provide that. Understanding that law enforcement's contract is two-point-two, a general fund is going to take over two-point-one, and we do have a supplemental law enforcement services fund that pays for a little bit of that. That's why the whole two-point-two is not in the general fund. And these are our biggest, again, professional contractual services, and which covers three-point-one. And we have another, you know, thirty or forty other vendors for small, little things. And that would include our videographer services, grant writing services, janitorial services. Yeah, those contracts are all under twenty thousand, so I wanted just to give you an idea of the bulk of our three-point-three million. Next slide, please. So as part of the packet, because it is the whole citywide budget, next slide, please. Yeah, our attachment does include all our other funds. Total requested proposed budget is eight-point-one million. And as City Council can see, from the last couple of years, we were looking at twelve million, and we're down to eight million now. Next slide, please. Total expenditures is a little over eight million, citywide. Next slide, please. So now we're going to talk about use of fund balance. As stated in the staff report, the only fund that is requesting to use fund balance, as earlier provided at council, next slide, please, is the general fund of ninety thousand dollars. And again, this is as a result of COVID nineteen. We have seen quite a few, a significant reduction in the last few months. So again, we're recommending the use of the fund balance to augment the city's general fund revenues for twenty twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. And this is just a summary showing the request to use ninety thousand. And as you can see, the column before, our year-end projections are still at three, using three-hundred-and-fifty-seven in change of the general fund. Next slide, please. Now I will turn this over to the city manager.
Mr. Duffy?
Next slide, please.
Thank you, Mayor. But can you go back maybe just two slides, just real quick? I just wanted to point out to the council, the three-fifty-seven, five-forty-four, and the ninety thousand for this year is still under the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand that you gave us the authorization to use of the fund balance.
And that takes into account, the property tax is what we were expecting it to be? I know when we had these projections, we were told that property tax was going to be slow to come in, but now we're hearing that it is actually set to come in at the rate that we should have expected.
That is correct. And but what she had to do is add back in the maintenance of effort. So that's sort of, that along with the sheriff, putting the sheriff's contract, the cost back in there, because it's uncertain, is kind of balances that out.
Okay.
Yeah. But my point was, we received authorization for the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand for nineteen twenty, but we're saying is we're going to be able to only use three-fifty-seven and the ninety thousand to not request any more above the four-fifty for this coming year.
Thank you.
So as the mayor and the council are familiar with this particular chart, it kind of talks about kind of where we've been and where we're going with our budget. And so we talk about the health of the budget. And so when we have an unsustainable or an insolvent budget, we have a budget where the revenues are less than the expenditures, and that is in this particular area. And then we have a vulnerable budget where the revenues exceed expenditures, but you don't have that two-month worth of reserve on the rainy day fund. And that would be in this particular area here. And the sustainable budget would be revenues exceed expenditures, and you have that two months worth of reserves. So here's where we are now. But we had five successive years of being in the vulnerable, close to sustainable rate, because we had the reserves and we also, our revenues were continuously growing, exceeding our expenditures. And so because of what's happening this year, we're using some of the rainy day fund, we're seeing our budget go into this unsustainable or insolvent area if we had year upon year in the situation. But as Miss Fortune has indicated in our budget proposal for this year, we're looking at only using about ninety thousand dollars of our reserve. But what we don't have is we don't have that two months' worth of reserves that we've had over the last six years. So because our fund balance is going to be around six-hundred-and-some-odd-thousand dollars, not the nine-hundred-and-ten that we would normally have. So that's why this chart has taken this dip. Okay, Miss Fortune?
So again, we're just here to present the budget review schedule. Next slide, please.
Mayor Protim, you have a question at this point?
Please, Mayor. Maintenance of effort, can you define that for the layman?
So when we receive like certain proceeds like Measure I, there's a requirement for us to contribute a certain percentage of money. And so every year, we, I think the number is, Miss Fortune, like one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars a year that we have to contribute. If we don't make that number, they keep track of it, then they require us to spend in the additional year. So we, because it's, if you don't do projects, you don't have this maintenance of effort, because if you have a long-term project or you haven't done individual projects, you don't do a project this year, so you didn't spend your maintenance of effort. And so we didn't do a significant project this year, so that's why our maintenance of effort wasn't actually utilized this year. So I think Mr. French is also online with us. And, Miss Fortune, did you have that actual number that we needed for our maintenance of effort this year?
Yes, Mr. Duffy, one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand is our yearly maintenance of effort fund. And if we don't hit that, they add it up for the following years, so that we have to spend more than to make up what we haven't spent in the past. So I'm to understand that that's our contribution?
Yes, sir.
For kind of an earnest contribution?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I can see we can't escape it. I get it.
I didn't hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Miss Fortune?
So in front of you is our budget schedule. We have introduced the budget tonight. If there are any other issues that council would like us to review or take a look at and see if they would like to continue or start deliberations tonight, or continue this on the ninth, or if they do not have any questions and would like us to return with budget adoption, that is up to the council. We are here to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles, do you have questions at this time?
I had the same question that the Mayor Protim had about, you know, we did a fiscal emergency and laid off employees based on declines in property tax, and now we're told that that's not really going to head out this year, it's going to be twenty-one, twenty-two. So I'm just wondering why we didn't have the sheriff's, I mean, we didn't have this maintenance of effort in that iteration that we did before when we laid off folks.
Miss Fortune?
Yes. Mayor Protim Robles, when we did the, when I projected the year end, we, because like you had said, it was an emergency and we were doing the best we could, we got our seven, eight-month actuals and pushed it out another twelve months, because that's all we could do. And when I was looking at it and I talked to Mr. French, I said, Mr. French, noticing that we had not done any, any street report or any big street projects, then we didn't do any maintenance of effort. Like Mayor Protim said, it requires us to do, the maintenance of effort is required by two funds, the road maintenance and rehabilitation and the Measure I funds, which we get two-hundred-thousand of each. If we do not meet our maintenance of effort, yeah, they can tell us that they won't give us as much because we did not contribute to our own city's road improvements. So if we want to proceed with our CIP next year and do road improvements, we are definitely going to have to have a maintenance of effort. Now, if City Council feels that the use of Measure I or the use of the road maintenance and rehabilitation program funds are not needed next year, then we would not need the maintenance of effort, because that's what it's based on. For all the money that we receive in the gas tax, for two-hundred-thousand that we receive in the gas tax, and for two-hundred-thousand that we receive in Measure I, they both require maintenance of effort if we are to spend those on our streets for street improvements.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, and also, Councilperson Robles, part of the, your question, we talked about the layoffs and the impacts. So what you see right now in this year's budget is the utilization of ninety thousand dollars from the rainy day fund. If you had not laid off the employees, your number would be about five-hundred-thousand dollars. That is the particular reason why. You only got certain, if you look back at the report that we gave, you got about eighty-seven-thousand dollars in employee savings in this year's budget, and you had a four-hundred-thousand-dollar savings in this year's budget. So the real impact of projecting for the future, you did that a couple weeks ago. But if you hadn't done that, your budget deficit, we'd be asking you for another four-hundred-and-some-odd-thousand dollars. Miss Fortune, do you have that number? What is that number?
I'm sorry, which one, sir?
The savings for the salaries and the benefits from the employee layoffs.
Approximately four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I don't have any handouts. I don't have any visual, you know, I'm flying with what I have on the agenda. And it was just something that was kind of difficult for me, is that, and even having this discussion is, property tax is our principal income. So now we're saying, we did a fiscal emergency budget based on those being down, was it nineteen percent?
It was four-
Nine percent.
It was nine?
Nine percent?
Nine.
Okay. So it just seems intuitively that we have some structural budget problems without the COVID crisis.
Mayor Protim, do you have a question?
Yeah, not a question necessarily, just that my experience is that budgets are only as good as their assumptions. And actually, in that particular point in time. So given the circumstances at the time, we used a certain set of assumptions, now we put a finer point to it. So I don't think it's really, I don't think it's intrinsic to the problem. I think it's really a matter of what assumptions you use. Budgets are a movable feast.
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions, staff? Councilmember Hossi?
You know, we're going in a healthy. Do you predict us getting, moving back up on your chart? I mean, do we have anything in plan where we could be sustainable for two months again? I mean, what is the outlook on that? Or if anything, I know this year we're down 90,000, but you know, sales tax, or do we predicting anything that's going to go up so we could start putting back in our rainy day fund?
So, sir, what you have before you today is what we believe is the worst-case scenario. And I can only emphasize how important it was that you took the action that you took weeks ago. Because you'd be facing that same situation right now with a $540,000 potential deficit in this particular year. And so while City Hall has been closed, locked down, we have been working on projects. And so the council has advanced the Greens Group. Domino's Pizza has been, is going to be opening relatively soon. We have another couple of other shops. And we still haven't received what those numbers are from our grocery outlet and our other grocery store here in town. So it's actually, the good news is that we're only projecting $90,000 deficit. But then there's, which we haven't been counting on, but there are those other reimbursements. For example, the League of California Cities, the governor has just assigned $450 million to be distributed to cities. That's of the 1.5 billion that they haven't spent of their 39 billion that they have. Huge numbers, I understand that. And so we expect that. We expect some reimbursement. And I'm still consistently, constantly talking to the county and anyone else that will listen. The County of San Bernardino receives $380 million. The Treasury Department has said they have the ability to move that money to any jurisdiction they would like to move it to. The county is concerned about a second wave of an epidemic, so they will not release that money. That money must be returned back to the Treasury by December 2020 if they don't utilize that money. That's $380 million that the county has. And one of the most important components that I've talked to the sheriff about, I've talked to the supervisor about, I've talked to the C A L about, is within the Treasury's direction, they make it very clear, send a statement out. They say that for administrative ease, that any law enforcement services is deemed to be COVID-19 related. That comes straight from the federal government. That means that at any point in time, the county can look at our law enforcement services that have been COVID-19 related. And it's anything where, anything in the budget that you had scheduled for normal services can now be, if it's COVID-19 related, it can be funded out of that. Carries that $380 million. So we continue to push things like that. If those things come forward, those would be nice pluses for us. But there are things that are in the pipeline, you know. Whether they're going to come to fruition later in the year or in the next fiscal year, we are still moving forward with our projects.
Well, the reason why I'm asking that, you know, if the economy, it's growing, but then it takes another hiccup, and we're down on our rainy day fund. I'm a conservative, I like to put money away for a rainy day. And I want to see how we could build up that fund again. It took us so long to get there. And then we have, one thing happened, and we're down half of our fund. But you know about the county and stuff. I know you sent us things on the HERO initiative and everything. And I know we had a supervisor row call in and stuff. So hopefully, that will get taken care of. But you know, I'm concerned that our funds depleted. And I'd like to have a way where we can add money in there, you know.
And, sir, I just want to add this, because it is extremely important, and I'm not blowing smoke in the council's ear, but it's because you have the rainy day fund, it's because you were good stewards in putting that money away, is that you're not in a significant crisis right now. And so if there were any point in time that you would ever use your rainy day fund, it's raining, and this is the time that you had to use it. So absolutely, you want to be able to build those funds back up. So when we come back to you with final numbers in the closeout, one of the things that we'll have to have a discussion with the council about is, so as we start to progress, how do we come out of this? What's the council priority? Do you want to replenish the rainy day fund first? Do you want to do a hybrid of replenishing rainy day fund and also adding staff back? So you have to figure, we have to come up with a strategy and how we're going to be moving forward. And so while the use of the rainy day fund, I understand your concerns about it. But thank goodness that you had the resources there to minimize the overall impact to the citizens.
I have a question.
Councilmember Robles?
You know, there is, you know, accounting is a snapshot in time. Budgeting is a little bit different. So I'm doing my due diligence as a councilperson because we just, a couple of weeks ago, had this catastrophic budget that included. And now, so I think a solution to this is, when you're saying your year-end, so you're going to close out June and come back? Or do we wait until mid-year in December and have another looksee? What is your plan?
So what my overall goal is to do is to provide you with an update on the latest information. But one of the things that we often do is we have a first quarter and a mid-year report. But I'm not going to wait until September. I'm going to give you information that we have. If things come in, you'll know that. But certainly, I think it would be prudent for me to provide you with the information. And then at the first quarter, you can make some, give me some direction on how to move forward. But one of the things that's very important is, because the information is fluid and as things change and come in, I need to provide you with, and Miss Fortune can provide you with, updates of where we are, of our cash, our financial positions.
It was my understanding when we talked about the cuts that you were coming back to us when the actual fiscal year closed with giving us the actual numbers. And that was sometime in July.
In July, yes.
Is that still the target?
That is still the target, yes. And from July onward, I will provide you with any improvements or any new revenue that we can be acquired to be able to say to you, because we have a certain level of service that we have right now. And one of the things that we have to look at is, how long can we maintain the level of service without it impacting the quality of the service that we provide? So as soon as we have the ability to do that, I'll have to come back to the council and look at additional revenue and what should we do with that revenue?
I have a final question.
Mayor, Councilmember Robles?
So, I'm trying to... Oh, so what, you know, I want to compliment all the staff on this. I know how difficult it is. I'm just trying to do what my role is. And, but can we also, how we move along with this, have a part of the budget, we should have the staffing? What positions are eliminated? Which ones are funded? Which ones aren't funded? That kind of thing. And I didn't see it.
We can certainly provide that. And also, Councilperson Robles, I do want to say thank you very much for acknowledging that we are all going through some difficulty in this process. I know from you, from a policy standpoint, I know it's not easy. And it was equally as frustrating for those of us that are remaining trying to maintain a certain level of service. So I appreciate your comment.
Further questions at this time? All right, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll come back. This is not, I guess this is direction to staff and more of a discussion. I don't see a reason to have a vote. Mr. City Attorney, do we need to vote on anything here?
We do not.
Thank you. All right, so you will, we will be discussing further during our priorities workshop. And then you want us, it sounds like we want you to come back next time to give some more information. I think you have some questions with respect to additional information that the council wants to see. Did you want to clarify any of that at this time?
Well, I did want to just make sure, talk to the city attorney, just to ask, the point is that since we are having our priorities workshop on Thursday, and that is a part of the budgetary process, should we continue on to the Thursday meeting? Or should we just have them as two separate items?
They are two separate items, as I see it. And usually, the only time you would formally continue it is if it's a public hearing. Notice public hearing, this is not. So we just notice it on the agenda, and that's sufficient.
So if we go into a discussion about the material that we had today at the meeting on Thursday, we're going to be fine?
It depends on how it's agendized.
Okay.
So if you're doing it as a priorities workshop, it's a priorities workshop, it's not a budget discussion.
Okay, so we'll have the priorities workshop, and then you'll come back at the next meeting with information from there and the questions that we were asking you tonight?
Okay, yes, Mayor.
That's what it sounds like to me?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so on to item 11, Mr. Duffy, COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I think that my slide will appear in just a second. So as the mayor and council is aware, is that we are entering into a new phase of COVID-19 as we prepare to come out of our many closure activities. And so just to kind of give the council an update of where we are, all four of our parks are open. We recently opened the Dog Park a couple of weeks ago. And we also have our businesses that are opening. And then our last place that's been closed to the public is City Hall. So we are currently looking at sort of the same activities that the retailers are going through in terms of how do we best prepare our staff and also the public with emphasis on social distancing, but also being able to receive plans, talk to customers, making sure that we have the proper protection for our employees. We anticipate having City Hall open no later than by Tuesday of next week with particular measures in place. In addition to that, we are looking at ways to fully open our parks in terms of all of our parking lots are closed. So we're examining how we can move forward in that particular area. If you look at this one section here, where it talks about COVID-19 and the reopening, one of the things that, as the county did their, had their assessment approved by the state, there are certain things that customers and employees should be looking for as we look at how people dine in the restaurants. So each business is required to do some internal training in terms of sanitation, employee health and safety. But there's also supposed to be a public notice put in front of each business that the public knows that they've gone through, they've taken certain precautions to be able to be operating. So you'll start to see that. But one of the things that's very important is that we rely on public health for information and also for public health for enforcement of any violators. So you do not see a code enforcement officer from the city of Grand Terrace going in and telling a business you can and cannot operate. What will happen is, if we get a call, we will then talk to public health. Public health has a direct pipeline to San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. And they will go out, and they will send a team out, and they will go out and they will talk to the businesses about complying. And so where we've had one or two cases of non-compliance, it's something that the county, through the public health department and the sheriff's department is looking at throughout the entire county of San Bernardino. But once again, what our role is, if someone wants to open a business and they call us, we tell them what the requirements are. And we say, "You were not listed as one, a business who can be open." And then we will refer them to public health. We ask them to look at the CDC guidelines and also the state health department and their guidelines. But I want to reiterate that our staff is not going out and shutting down a business. And we truly rely on public health to give us any information. And then residents have been given the information where they can call public health and report a business that's not operating. So also too, just to note that the county had over 1,800 businesses as of last week that were applying for their small business grant program where you could call in and get certified and do self-certification. And you would get a certification from the county to say that, yes, you have taken the proper precautions for your businesses. And we have that information on our website where you can go and sign up for the county's program. And the county's committed $30 million to that program to help businesses all over the state, all over the state. And so with that, that's the end of my report. And I'm available for any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Questions, staff, at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Thanks for that report, Mr. Duffy. Hey, what's the, what do you anticipate the business-as-usual date? In other words, like, you know, when, like, we were just talking about code enforcement. When's code enforcement, they're going to be resuming all their routine, you know, functions and duties and fines? Anyway, go ahead.
So we anticipate by June the 7th that we should be back in full force in terms of parking enforcement, sending information out to the public, re-engaging with them on any particular violations that they would have. So that is our anticipated date.
Okay. The rental program and all that will be back, picking back up again and all that?
I'm sorry, sir.
The program for the code enforcement, they monitor the rentals?
Yes, sir. And so we're actually monitoring those right now. But in terms of going out, visiting and doing enforcement, we'll resume that in early June.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hossi?
A couple of questions. Mr. Duffy, when we become fully open, the bathrooms in the parks, we have an S O P, how we're going to understand operating procedures? Are we going to disinfect that once a day? Or what's your goal on that? I mean, how are we going to take care of it?
Yeah, those are very, very good questions. Because what we have to do is, we're trying to make sure that we can comply with the requirements. And so we're working with public health to try to determine that, that if we clean the restrooms in the morning, is that good enough to last till the next morning? Or do we have to try to come in in the afternoon and try to clean? And then, and maybe that might be okay Monday through Friday, but it might not be the same on a Saturday. And so, for example, right now at all of our parks, we have handwashing stations. And I've observed that some people don't use them. But one of the things, we have those out there for 30 days. And those little handwashing stations are not inexpensive. And so the question becomes, as we move into the next month, do we still need to have those handwashing stations? We had gotten to the point where initially, we were trying to wrap benches so people wouldn't sit on them. And we said, you know, we can post the notice at the front, we can post the notice on the benches, but people will make their own choices. And our goal is to advise them on how they should operate in this area, and they'll make their own choices. So as we look at the restrooms, the water fountains at the parks, we're trying to make sure that whatever we do is consistent with the county health department.
Because the reason why I'm asking that, because I've been in some places where they have outhouses right there by the locked restrooms, and it didn't make any sense. You know, as far as the county goes, they had that grant program for $2,500 for local businesses to help with the decontamination or cleaning. Does the city, can the city get that too? For like what you said, for the hand sanitizers? And if the local businesses, do they just apply to the county for that? They don't have to go anything through the city, right?
No, they apply directly to the county for that, yes. And so for us, we are under FEMA reimbursement. So we are tracking all of our costs, and we'll get 75% of the reimbursement.
Okay, and thank you for clarifying about... And thank you for clarifying about our code enforcement is not going out, breaking down doors, closing businesses. I mean, I know the rumor mill has it out there, and I have came across some businesses in town where it had the county letter on there, and it, you know, I'm pretty sure somebody turned that business in, because there's a same business right next door to it. But I just want to thank you guys for clarifying that, you know, and not giving the city a bad taste in all the work that code enforcement is doing out there and all you guys, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you for that update. Next item on our agenda is request for future agenda items by city council. We have one item to consider, San Bernardino International Airport flight patterns, and this is requested by Councilmember Allen. Did you have a couple of comments you'd like to make?
Sure, I do, Mayor, thanks. So, it's not just the title of here, San Bernardino Airport Flight Patterns, although that is what motivated me to ask for this to be on the agenda. But I've lived over on the West Side for about, for more than 20 years, and I like probably most of the residents in Grand Terrace. I think that there's times whenever there's unnecessary helicopter traffic over Grand Terrace. And I just want to have a discussion to see if we have any kind of control over our airspace. I know that we do, but I don't know how much or what. The, what inspired me to ask for this discussion is when I read a report or a news article in the LA Times that Amazon had signed a contract with San Bernardino for a logistics center over at the old Norton Air Base, and that by next year, there will be, just Amazon alone will have their, estimating at 26 flights a day. And so, the other day, I was standing in my front yard, and a huge FedEx jet went on a takeoff pattern out of that place, right over, right over my house. And I thought, you know, if Amazon is going to be doing 26 flights a day, just them, what's FedEx and UPS and all of that? I know that the state has sued the airport and Amazon and all that, because there was, they say there wasn't a proper environmental impact review done on the air quality that it would cause on the neighborhoods. And if they're going to put Grand Terrace in the takeoff pattern, I think we should have a say-so in that. So, I just want to have that discussion and find out, you know, about the flight patterns over, for helicopters, for rotor-wing aircraft that fly over Grand Terrace at low altitudes or that hover over Grand Terrace so that they can watch the 10 freeway or the 215 freeway or some, whatever's going on in Colton with their high-powered cameras. Just, I would like to, because that sort of stuff affects our quality of life. It's loud, it's noisy, vibrates windows. I've had people tell me these things, happens in my house. That's the reason I put it on here, thanks. And it doesn't have to be anytime soon. I understand that, you know, it's not a big high-priority thing, and we got the budget issues and a lot of more important things with COVID-19 going on. But I don't ask for much very often, but I asked for this.
Okay, so that's your motion to bring that back as a discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem Wilson? Mayor Protem, I know you said something very valuable that we want to hear, but you were on mute. And the city clerk is working on unmuting you? Okay, there you go. Please, please continue.
I believe the TRSA's and the rest of the federal aviation stuff is actually a federal issue. So, unless we want to, and I enlist the help of the city attorney, but I know there have been some actions in relation to John Wayne and some of the small private airports over there in the same neck of the woods. And I believe also that they went on 10, 15-year battles and never really made a lot of headway, especially when the airports are there first.
Mr. City Attorney?
So, I don't know that we will have a lot of horsepower, even if we had the money to do it.
Mr. City Attorney?
Sure. My understanding, I'm not an aviation expert by any means, but my understanding is, it is governed by the FAA airspace. And what Mayor Protem was discussing was, yes, there was a battle in Orange County over the flight patterns over, you know, the beach areas in Orange County. And I think it was a long, protracted battle. My understanding was, was that an agreement was reached such that they ascend at a higher rate, or it goes up more quickly, I guess, so that it gets out of, makes less noise, I guess, around the area. But that's as much as I know, but I'm looking into it.
Which also meant that they, since they had to ascend at a higher rate, that means they spent more noise and smoke trying to get up to that high rate faster. So, it really, the only reason why I know that is because a friend of mine, who is since deceased, was kind of the head of the committee for that thing. And so, unfortunately, we don't have, don't have a lot of leg to stand on when it comes to going after the federal government, but we can try.
Okay. So, this is set to vote to come back for us, to discuss having it come back to us, is pretty much how our option works. So, we have a motion to have it come back for us to consider, and that would pare down what the scope would be. We have a second that would do that as well. And I appreciate the input on the legalities of all that. Mr. Duffy, you had one more thing you wanted to say.
I just want to say, if the council moves this forward, a simple call to SBX, to the airport can probably have a conversation to see what their plans are. And I can bring that general information back to the council when it comes back for discussion.
As part of our looking at the scope of what it would be?
Yes.
And there's an FAA ombudsman who is also responsible for
Okay.
being the go-to person for these things.
Okay. So, there's some, there's some resources for it to come back for scope of work. Okay, so, would you, is there any, we don't ask for public comment on this. Will you please call the vote, please? Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
No.
Mayor McNaboe?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, Mr. City Manager, do you have further communications for us?
I do not, Mayor.
All right. So, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Please remember in your thoughts and prayers, the family of Rainey Richards, city council, excuse me, Rainey Richmond, I wrote her name wrong. She is, she was a Grand Terrace resident and an active member of the Women's Club and other volunteer.
Beautiful, beautiful woman.
Yeah, a lot of energy. So, please remember her family and your thoughts and prayers at this time. And we are closing in her memory, and with that, we are adjourned.